Pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. In thee is an apt temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thee is the kingdom, the power, and the glory of our life. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item D on the agenda is the State of the City address by Mayor Jason Mazel. I do want it. Yes?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to fulfill my mayoral obligation to present the 2022 State of the City. I'm not sure about you, but during my often, but often during my infrequent quiet times, I have old phrases bouncing around in my head. Tonight, I'll talk about, highlight two of those phrases. The first one was said by assistant football coach Carl Younger. He said the same thing each Friday night for three seasons. His key to the games were always the same. Play good defense. Don't turn the ball over. And as you watch football at any level, the team that does those two things the best, the team that plays the best defense by avoiding the big play, taking on the blocks, and when presented, making the tackle, that, my friends, is good defense. The other part, not turning the ball over, speaks for itself. The team that does those things usually ends up winning the game. And one of my first council meetings back in October of 2012, I sat right where Lori's sitting, as a matter of fact. Someone told me, Jason, one of the roles of council is not to expose and appoint to excessive risk. In other words, play good defense. Let's explore how our departments did that this past year. How did we play good defense? I'm not sure about you, but one of the elite teams that plays good defense daily is our fire department. In 2021, they took 1,936 calls for service. Think about that. 1,936 times they answered. They played good defense for being on the front lines with preserving life and fighting fires. The police fire department also fights fires before they even start with their fire prevention programs and our inspections. They train harder. You could say they practice good defense daily and are even training harder with the ongoing improvements to fire training facility. Another great team of playing defense, how about our people in blue? Chief Mack and his team complete the software updates, help integrate information between officers and prosecutor's office. The software allows many folks involved in safety of better access to records and should make the department even more responsive to ongoing cases. Soon, they'll be even better defensively when the sixth dispatcher is added. The sixth dispatcher give Chief Mack and his folks an even greater ability to provide vital safety services to Napoleon. The law department played good defense in 2021. They had over 1,400 pre-trials, 93 trials, and helped reduce blighted property and blight issues in Napoleon. It's kind of hard to say the prosecutor played good defense, but in many ways, exactly what law department does. Thank you, Billy and Tammy, for being such a great team. Let's move along to the water treatment plant where Jeff Weis and his team did a good job playing defense by completing and integrating updates in accordance with America's Water Infrastructure Plan, Infrastructure Plan. What does that plan do? It requires the development of risk assessment and emergency plans for our water system. You mean now they have a game plan, how to play defense, and they practice that plan? Well, yes, yes, they do. Plus, by not having mass boil alerts, they proved once again the task of making safe water every day for Napoleon. Engineering worked hard all year. We all know that. They added personnel and updated the GIS system. By updating that GIS system, our folks in the field can make quicker decisions, better decisions, to help minimize impact during system issues. Sounds like good defense to me. You know, Jeff Rathke and his team played good defense by using over 700 tons of salt during the winter months. They also helped clean up Napoleon to tune to 481 tons of trash moving landfill, almost 60 tons of metal to be recycled, and over one and a half tons of tires transported during the fall and spring cleanups. That service is vital to keeping Napoleon cleaner. That's playing good defense, and we'll look better every time. Thank you, Jeff, for doing that. Another team plays great defense, our electric department. When outages are measured in minutes instead of days, that is good defense. That is doing all the basic things so it wins game time. When the weather hits, those are easy days because the work was done when the weather was not good. Oh, by the way, they installed LED security lighting. Received a smart energy provider designation by AAPP. They also helped their residents and business by installing proper lines and poles to new housing developments and business hookups. The Waste Trade Treatment Plan is playing good defense during the reconstruction of its facility. This process is going to help Napoleon long term. Okay, so look, I've been hammering on the play good defense part, but the other part of that phrase is don't turn the ball over. So what does that mean? To me, it means when the opportunity to take momentum, to move forward, potentially score points, to improve our position, that's what we do. Let's take Waste Water Treatment because they also didn't miss a beat when leadership transferred from David Pike to Jeremy Oakley. Having the right people in the right job is a signal not turning the ball over. That's where Kevin Garrick and his team comes in in 2021. Number one, welcome Kevin. This, much of the transition inside the Waste Trade Treatment Team, is key to the key to success in Napoleon. The finance department also sent required documents, the auditor state, and that report came back clean. In other words, they didn't turn the ball over. I'm excited to see how the finance department continues to evolve with Rita, the new taxation system coming on board. Human resources reported well, but they turned over, we had a really low turnover rate. Now, don't turn the ball over, low turnover rate, kind of makes sense. I had another great year retention of 2021, saw another year below our five-year average. We had 6.6 and 1/2% turnover in 2021. Not only that, but due to our wellness program, preventing the program that led us to healthcare cost increase of just 2.49%. That, my friends, is not turning the ball over. Another department that didn't turn the ball over is IT with the role of a new website. I think that's a third of the race of websites that have been here, and we're finally able to have a webpage built for our bosses, the citizens of Napoleon. Well done, fellas. Joe Major, the city manager, reminded me that we didn't turn the ball over. We purchased a land at the corner of Commerce and Interchange. This undeveloped property will get future counters as a tool for business expansion and retention. Speaking of economic developments, I agree with the CIC for potential spec building to be built hopefully soon. Also, the CIC, we want to pause and welcome Jennifer Arbs to her new role as CIC director. She has done everything she can to not turn the ball over and keep industry moving forward here in Napoleon, Henry County. And you want another example of not turning the ball over? What's the sale of the AMP transmission project? And since there are citizens holding that cost, we, because of our stronger association with AMP, we're able to leverage that into a better outcome. We also signed the Village of Florida to a long-term water contract, continue talks with Malin and others about a high-quality water. Another example of not turning the ball over. And finally, our sour relationship with the Napoleonic Schools is a great example of not turning the ball over. There was a time, fairly recently, when this wasn't the case. There was a time that relationship was being fumbled, and I'm proud to see it's coming back to the benefit of Napoleon, all of Napoleon. We cannot allow ourselves to turn this, during this relationship away as we pave around the campus this year. We appreciate the partnership and look forward to it continuing. Now, look, I told you when I started, we had two phrases. Before I give the second one, I need to provide some context. As many of you know, my family's been involved in farming for generations. When I was in junior high and high school, I tried to make my way out there as often as I could. Now, in the autumn, many things are happening on the farm and may at the same time for successful harvest. When the combine goes to field and starts its work, that's noticeable. When the tractor with the loaded wagon comes to the barnyard, when the wagon pulls next to the auger and the corn slides out of the gravity box in the auger and up in the bin, all of those are noticeable. All those steps are important. But the last step of the day, after the combine has finished shelling for the day, after the last wagon has been unloaded, the last step of the day, it's not noticeable, yet it's just as important. The last step is climbing into the grain bin, scoop shovel in hand, and leveling the corn. The corn needs to be leveled so that when the fan is turned on, the corn has a better chance of drying evenly. So on this particular day, it was my uncle, God rest his soul, and I who drew the short straws. He climbed up the ladder, over the top, and into the bin. I was shoveling, and I heard him say with a soft growl in his voice, load the back. And at first, I'm thinking, how do you load the back of a round bin? Where's the back? And I turned to look, and there he was, covered in grain dust, gleam in his eye, eyes on top of his shovel, and then he said the full phrase. Jason, just load the back of the shovel. The front will take care of itself. You see, I was doing a really good job of looking busy, loading the front of the shovel, but by digging just a little deeper, that job was accomplished so much quicker. That job went so much smoother, and our time in the bin was short. So as we review some big events, let's consider how we made load the back in 2022. This past year, we had some memorable, some very noticeable events happen here in Napoleon. First, we had our girls' basketball team win state title. What a night. We closed downtown to traffic and had a party. I remember vividly, so many people lining the streets waiting for the team to arrive. I remember the van door opening, and the first thing I saw wasn't the coach, it wasn't the team. I saw that trophy go sky high. And the way those girls played together, the way they cared for each other, the way they danced the night away, that was a noticeable day. So was the opening of a new aquatic facility. That was a great day. Yes, it was delayed for a week. Let's be honest. We were blessed with much better weather by waiting a week. We also appreciate Senator McCulley and Representative Hoops for their help in pushing us across the finish line. Of course, the pool wouldn't pass without Tony Carter, and not just during construction, but all the time before. The way his department operates, by taking immense pride in their work, by focusing on what matters and doing their best every day. You could say they do a good job of loading the back. Without those efforts, the pool levy would have failed. Again, that June day, kids jumped in the water, slides operating, the bucket dumping water. What a great day. What about Lady Justice was put back atop her perch? What a great day. Another Saturday, blue sky Saturday, full of kids giving speeches. Watching her fly up to the top of the courthouse with red, white, and blue smoke coming off as church bells rang out. What a great day. And what a relief when Bill Meyer finally gave us that big gesture that she was back in the rightful place. That was a noticeable day. That was a memorable day. Another state route 108 in Henry County was named after the first female admiral of the United States Navy. Memorable, just as the Second River Bridge. I'm guessing in 50 and 20 years, when people ask, hey, when was that? My answer is going to be in 2021, and I'm guessing I'm going to be right more often than I'm wrong. Yet now is not the time to rest. Now is time to not load the front, and now is time to load the back. The tasks we're tackling this year are just as important to ones in 2021. Maybe not as noticeable, not as memorable, but they're still important. This is time to load the back by making sure we're correctly allocating the funds we receive from the federal, state government and the way that propels us forward. We need to load the back because we need to seek new opportunities for economic development and new housing starts. On this smart link through King Day, let us strive to remember the underrepresentatives by finding ways to leverage relationships and a positive outcome for all of Napoleon. We also need to keep the positive momentum going by loading the back of the Waste Trade Treatment Plan. This is not the time to just load the front and appear busy. Nope, let's keep loading the back. You want an easy way to not turn the ball over, to load the back? Since the paving crews will be here on Front Street, why don't we ask them to pave our parking lot? A new parking lot hope is projected better image of what we can be here in Napoleon. I don't want to imagine someone new coming to town, gliding down a repaved front street to be knocked around by potholes in our parking lot. Now, look, at the heart of playing good defense, the core of loading the back is teamwork. We're not perfect in this room. We know that, and each year is different. But let us here strive to continue our recent history of being able to disagree without disrespect. Hopefully, we continue to play good defense, not turn the ball over. Let's load the back together. Thank you, Jim.
I think next year, we're going to put that at the end of the meeting because that's kind of hard to follow after that. Thank you. Especially when I can't find my agenda. All right, we'll move to item E, approval of minutes from January 3, 2022, and January 10, 2022, special council meeting minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, they'll stand approved. Item F, citizen communication, if there's anyone out in the audience that would like to address council and anything that is not on the agenda. Looks like in person, we just have one non-council member back there, but if there's anyone else that's on WebEx that would like to ask a question, go ahead and type that in the chat. Item G, reports from council committees. G1, Electric Committee met on January 10, or did not meet. It was canceled due to lack of agenda items. G2, Water and Sewer Committee did not meet due to lack of agenda items. And item G3, Municipal Properties Building Land Use and Economic Development Committee met on January 10, 2022 and made a recommendation. I recommend council approve making Front Street one way from Scott Street to Riverview and to modify the codified ordinances to allow parking on front from North Perry to Riverview. And Parks and Rec Committee did not meet earlier today due to lack of agenda items. Moving on to item I, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. I1 is ordinance number 001-22 and ordinance supplementing the annual appropriation measure, supplement number six for the year 2021, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All right, and then suspension will be requested. Okay, Kevin?
I could speak for all three of these, one, two, and three. These are the year-end adjustments for the 2021 budget where we would have to balance out line items in our appropriations to make sure that we're all balanced for the good of the city and for, we're ready for the 2021 audit. I would request that all three of these be passed. And once they all are, this would officially allow us to close the books for 2021.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Kevin on this? All right, we will need a motion for suspension.
Motion. Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That has been passed on first read under suspension. Item I2 is ordinance number 002-22 and ordinance authorizing the finance director to make appropriation transfers, transfer of appropriation four from one appropriation line item to another appropriation line item pursuant to ORC Section 5705.40 for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, as listed in Exhibit A and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Kevin, nothing else to add?
Well, I guess I would just say, like, the first one was, is to adjust line items specifically to get them to balance out. This second one here is, is instead of increasing line items, as long as they're in the same fund, in the same department, we were able to move some funds that weren't being used from one line item to the other, which this in turn does not increase our appropriations total with that. And we'd prefer to do that if we can. But this, that's what this resolution would be about.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Motion for suspension. Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yeah.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, and please call the roll on the ordinance.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension. Item I3 is resolution number 003-22, a resolution authorizing finance director to transfer certain fund balances, transfer number five from respective funds to other funds per ORC Section 5705.14 on an as-needed basis in fiscal year 2021, listed in Exhibit A and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Kevin?
This last one here, if you remember, when we passed the 2022 budget, there was like eight resolutions that went with it. And one of those resolutions is it allows the finance director to transfer funds from one fund to the next. And there's a cap on how much we can do that. In this case here, this is a good thing in that most of these is that we receive more money in than we anticipated. For example, the top one, two, three of them in Exhibit A are the income tax fund. And so we had to raise those where we would transfer from the income tax fund to general fund, capital fund, rec fund. So that, again, this is year-end items. We're adjusting our line items, the budgeting amounts to get them corrected to what we actually transferred.
All right, thank you. Have a motion for suspension?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I just have one. How long have you been doing this? You sound like you've been doing this for like 15 years.
Budgeting, governmental budgeting for about 10, 10 to less, but some of it's the same and some of it's just figuring it out, right?
Yep. Well, I appreciate the way, at least you explain it to us people that don't do budgeting and the finances every day.
I'm a big believer in the KISS method, right?
Right.
Keeping it simple?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll on the resolution.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension. Item I4, resolution number 004-22, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Housing Revolving Loan Fund Administration Agreement between the State of Ohio Development Services Agency and the City of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Motion. Second.
Hey, Joel?
Thank you, Council President. This is, as Kevin explained at the last meeting, this is money in, money out. This is the home program that's managed by the Mommy Valley Planning Organization. And basically, the money is grant money that's used to, for homeowners to apply for that meet the eligibility requirements. And they can make home improvements to their homes and then get reimbursed and then, you know, just run through this grant program through Mommy Valley Planning. So it really doesn't, it really just has to be run through our books. I told Kevin it's like ZZ Top. He just says it on the line. It's, but it does have to show on our books for auditing purposes. So since it's a grant fund for the City of Napoleon, it has to be managed through us, run through our books. But it is managed by, and housed by the Mommy Valley Planning Organization.
Thank you.
Did you get the ZZ Top reference?
Nope.
So would this be?
Just YouTube a tiny bit.
Would this be considered as service to our citizens?
Yeah, oh yeah, definitely. Oh, absolutely, covered that.
And how are they made aware of it?
It's eligibility requirements, so that, you know, the marketing of the program, you mean?
Well, I just wondered.
Yeah, I don't, since I've been here, there really hasn't been a whole lot of marketing that I'm aware of. But unless Mommy Valley Planning is working with the different agencies within the City of Napoleon, I would know that for certain. I know they've had a lot of turnover, and I know they've, I do know they have made some attempts, but, you know, to date, I don't know where they're at with their marketing programs or what kind of connections they have with, say, Together Would You Make a Difference? Or the FISH program or anything like that. So I know they work with the local organizations and try to get the message out to the clients of those, that seek services from those agencies.
Okay.
And if I can add, Councilwoman Sclaire, is that this is just not a giveaway program. It is called a revolving loan program. And while maybe the loan may be forgiven, there are a lot of times that's run through the NOCAK program. They have to have certain requirements to be eligible for it. They have to take, like, budgeting classes to be eligible for it. There certainly is some skin in the game on the people that are receiving their services, and they can't sell their home for like a certain amount of years after this stuff is done. So it's not like they can just turn it over with that, without penalty.
Yeah, they can't flip the house. I think it's five years, by the way.
Yeah.
Because they're cut off. And again, I haven't checked the program requirements in a while, so I think it was five years. I don't think that's changed, but we've got to look back on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I do know of a couple people that have used the program previously and have been well satisfied with it.
Great.
I've had some feedback as well, the same thing. Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay. That one will move on to second read. Item J, second readings of ordinances and resolutions. J1 is ordinance number 063-21 and ordinance authorizing a pay increase for the City of Napoleon, Ohio law director and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
I don't think we have anything that we need to discuss here at the time. Nothing's changed from first read. Anybody have any questions or comments on it? Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yep.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Moving on to item J2, resolution number 064-21 and ordinance authorizing a pay increase for the City of Napoleon, Ohio city manager and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Same here, nothing new, but any questions or comments? Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay. That too will be moving on to third read. Item K, third readings of ordinances and resolutions. K1 is resolution number 061-21, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to acquire approximately 3 and 3/10 acres of land, commonly referred to as loose field, located within the City of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Motion?
Motion. Second.
Anything new on this one, Joel?
There is not anything new on this one, but just if this passes tonight, then we'll start on the survey work and the title work right away. That way, it'll clear up the one issue that was brought up or potential question that came up with regard to the title work and the deed, any deed restrictions that was brought up thus before. So we'll get to the bottom of that right away, and I think the survey work, we can get started on that right away, too. In the end, in the aftermath of this, there's still a little bit of work. We've got to replat the property. We have to, you know, survey it, you know, set new boundaries for the parcel that's going to be split off. Basically, two new parcels. And then, yeah, clear up the title work, so it'll be a little bit of time before any property closes since that has to take place first. So we've got a little time, but we'll work through those details.
Couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
Because I have had a question from a few people. How in the original contract, we were talking about paying $1 for loose field. Now it's $100,000, and how we came to that? I did just see the appraisal work that was done. Can, can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah. So one of the issues, I guess in the beginning, because this came before council once before, and then did you go through? The issue was of what is the value of the property? And what the ownership interest wanted done was to have an appraisal done on, on the property in two different segments, one for just loose field and one for whatever the remaining property is. And to have it appraised as if the properties were totally vacant. So, meaning that loose view, loose field is virtually vacant. It appraised at $100,000. The remaining property appraised at, at an approximate $245,000. So that, they had hired a commercial realtor that done the appraisals to come up with those numbers.
Did we think that it would be in our best interest to do our own appraisal also? This is typically how you would have them do their own appraisal and?
You know, we, we could, but, you know, at the end of the day, the appraisal is done from an unbiased perspective. You know, we had the appraisals done at the old senior center and they all came in within the same range. There were three appraisals that were done. They were right around the $200,000 mark was what it was appraised at. At, at the time, I, I, you know, I, I felt that, you know, in a recommendation to city council that a $100,000 value was, was fair. If you're looking at fair market value for a property, a price per acre, vacant land in that location, it, it just, I, I didn't feel that it was, you know, we could have just for verification and drug it out a little further, but I, I didn't think that it was a worthy expense, just based on, you know, what we know of the property. So.
Right.
Based on the zoning too. Zoning factors into this as well.
So speaking of the zoning, then if, I mean, it's hard to find comps that are similar for that property. And like you said, this is, there will need to be work done on it before it can be developed. Are we pretty confident that we would find someone that would pay that much per acre? Just because it looks like it's quite a bit more than other properties?
Hey, I don't know what properties.
Other housing, because this says what it would be, multifamily and condominium housing would be the highest, highest and best use of the land?
It's zone R3 right now, which I believe is a single-family and condo, so it could be a mixture of things. But the master plan actually has it as a mixed use. Our zoning code doesn't really address that type of, you know, mixed use. I mean, it does, but it's, it's loose. No pun intended. But it's, you know, in terms of comps, even the realtor, you know, I, I talked with the, with the realtor that did the, did the appraisal, and he struggled to find comps. And he was looking in other areas because there really wasn't anything that really fit this.
Right.
So, I mean, you could say, I mean, there's a couple of properties, West School, but, you know, West School needed a lot of work, too. And that was a lot more acreage, but it needed a lot of work, utility work. In terms of, you know, like senior housing complex, it's kind of a different, I, I don't know, it's, it depends on where you're at, but, you know, the location is why, what I believe you cited in the, in the appraisal that, which, which made it maybe seem like it was a little higher than what would be, you know, more localized comps.
Right.
So, is, is the reason why it's low.
Right. I mean, I think it's probably in the best interest of the city to be able to direct what, what happens with that land. I just don't know if it's a concern to anyone else or if anyone's thought that, that in order to have, I mean, ultimately, we would want it to be purchased by someone, right?
Right. Yeah, yeah. And I think when it was originally offered at a dollar, I think that came with, we're going to turn it into recreation and we have all the, all of the maintenance of all stuff. And then we said no at that time, because we were changing at that time from having, you know, soccer fields at the senior, at the senior, CD Brillhart then, I think, still. And then, you know, we became, you know, the senior place or the senior center. So, you know, situations have changed. And I, I agree with, with what ultimately said, is I think it's just nice that we can kind of determine one goes in there a little easier because we own it versus not. So.
But if I may, to elaborate a little more, there's a, the old agreement, I know it's referenced in the attachment. And the old agreement has the Civic Center, Napoleon Civic Center Group, which is now the cultural center of Pendleton County, having to sell the property at a fair market value. Fair market value, I believe in this case, has been determined by the appraisal. So it's being sold at fair market value, so that money is run through a group and it's, it's actually given back to the donor in some way, in some form or fashion. So that's the, the only way to purchase the property is through fair market value per the old agreement or else it's, you know, or else we leave it to, to the fate of the, what that board would decide a later day and not act on anything. So, again, my opinion, I know I stated this before, the mayor just reemphasized it, it's a, it's an opportunity cost. It, you know, my opinion is, as a recommendation to council, it's a critical piece of property that leaving in the hands of the unknown, I don't believe would be in the best interest of the city. I think it's, it's better for the city to own it so that if we, we as a city, as an entity, can have something put there that would, would make the most sense, the highest and best use. And, and that being, you know, potentially a mixed use, commercial, residential, I don't know. So it's an opportunity cost and, you know, hopefully it, it pays off, you know. Is there risk? Yes.
Yes.
Always risk.
Right.
There will be risk in things like, same with Commerce Drive. There will be risk, but it's.
There's risk either way.
That's, that's right.
Right.
There's risk either way. What will it develop into versus we control it and then we can guide its development?
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That has passed on third read. Item K2 is ordinance number 062-21, an ordinance amending section 143.01 of the City of Napoleon's codified ordinances, composition of control of the city fire rescue department, increasing the composition of the fire department, and repealing ordinance number 018-20. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Nothing you can report. It changes the composition of the fire department from five to six, and this reflects the reciprocity.
Mr. President?
Yes.
A question for the fire chief. I know we were one down and we also have the new position now. Are we making progress in applicants toward that, filling those positions?
Yep. We, we did, we did conduct our interviews last week. So we, we interviewed six last week and now we've got it down to three. So we'll be moving on, the three will be moving on to second interviews. And so it's a good problem to have, but it's a really, really tough one this time. So, yep, moving along.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That has passed on third read. Moving on to item L, Good of the City. L1 is discussion or action, review approval of the power supply cost adjustment factor for January 2022, PSCA three-month average factor 0.02008, and JV2 0.061962. Joel?
Thank you, Council President. This does seem a little high. I know that there were some congestion issues at one of our projects, actually a couple of projects. So what that is, is a, is kind of a wild card factor. Usually, a lot of times in the wintertime, if, if cold snaps and things like that, you'll get, you'll get some congestion issues and some, you know, potentially some brownouts or blackouts. But in this case, we just had a couple of projects that, that experienced this. And it's more a market condition than anything, but it did cause our, our power supply three-month rolling average to be up higher than what, what we would expect this time of year. But it's still, it, it's still in the realm of where our normal rates are at. So I'd say this puts us at around the 12 cent range as opposed to the 11 and a half cent range.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve?
Subtle.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
All right. That's been approved. Item L2, discussion or action on recommendation to approve making Front Street one-way from Scott to Riverview and to modify the codified ordinances to allow parking on Front Street from North Perry to Riverview. Joel?
Thank you. Molly's not here. I wasn't there for the meeting either, but I, I will say that we did have the recommendation from the Municipal Properties Committee to make Front Street one-way from Scott to Riverview, where it kind of comes out at the, at the, at the edge of the city parking lot, at the end of Trigem. And to allow for parking on Front Street on the north side from North Perry, so the bridge to the, the end of Front Street towards the city. And there's already parking there now, but there isn't, right now in the ordinance, no parking's allowed. So this would be more or less a cleanup item unless, unless council doesn't want to pass that. And then we would, then at that point, start enforcing the parking on that side of the street. So my, my recommendation would be to, since this, this requires legislation, my recommendation now would be to request that council direct, Billy, direct the law director to direct legislation to allow parking on the front, on the north side of Front Street. That, that could, that could take place right now. But also to hold off on the making Front Street one-way until the construction is done or at least near completion. So that, you know, when, as we get bids, we get plans done, bids out, bids back, and the project is underway, we can, we can have a better timeline when that one-way change would take place. So unless anybody, this is a discussion point, this was a recommendation from the committee. Sorry, I didn't, Molly's not here, it was the chair of that committee and there were other committee members here. I don't know if anybody else wants to jump in and make a few comments or ask a question.
I think when we discussed it, I think Chad, you had mentioned that especially the one-way isn't going to change until we have everything else completed.
Right.
And at that time, we're also going to look at changing some of the parking with maybe angled or, and the, the new ones would be, would these all be marked where the parking is allowed?
The, currently, the parking in front of Lumber Yard Winery is stone. Those would not be able to be striped. If it was paved, we could stripe it, but that area would be parallel parking. And then the area where Trigem is located would be angle parking. We'll have more space once the road is one-way. They do fit now, but that street doesn't see much traffic. It'll be better, safer, once we have it one-way, but it, it could work for now, I think, with parking. And then on the southerly side, we obviously don't want any parking in front of the car wash. We can't allow parking there. The existing parking on the block from Scott to Riverview on the south side, that parking is actually on private property. So that's why we're making the request for parking on the north side. The codifies have the parking tables and it calls for no parking allowed on either of those blocks, on either side currently.
Now, if we do allow parking on the north side, will we have some signage stating if it's, which way they have to park, since we can't stripe it?
We are looking into some type of signage at Trigem, obviously. If we need to do some type of signage regarding the type of parking allowed, we can. However, what we're proposing matches how everyone is currently parking. A lot of times, we have streets in town with no parking, but there's no sign that says no parking. We put the signs up if we need to. It might be one of those if down the road, we need a sign, we put a sign up. But right now, that's how everyone's currently parking, is angled at the factory and parallel at the winery.
Would we want to take a look at how much it would be to pave those?
We are actually looking at what it costs to pave at the winery. We have not put numbers to paving at the Trigem. You can run that, run numbers and see what that cost would be as part of the project.
I think kind of what Jason said in his, his address today with adding possibly the, the city parking lot.
Yep. When we look at the.
I think the same thing here. It's, it's going to look kind of unfinished, in my opinion.
No, we can look at that. Right now, we're just working with lines on paper, so it's easy to put together.
Chad, you worked up a number for me for the city parking lot. Will you share that?
With a 10% contingency, we had it at $110,000. I looked, we originally ran that estimate in 2007. I think we've run the estimate about every four or five years. 2007 was $50,000, just for reference.
It's not getting better.
No, asphalt does not go down.
Well, just the, the, the condition of it doesn't get better.
No, that, that, honestly, rear parking lots don't very good either.
I believe that, too. Yeah. I just thought since the crews are going to be here versus having another mobilization cost. So, and if we're going to turn that fence out to do stuff anyways, it'd be easier for them if we take, take the fence out, be able to repave the whole thing all at once.
And yes, I kept that in mind. A lot of times on a paving job, we can see a mobilization. Mobilization gets paid as a lump sum. That means we don't pay them based on how much they do. They put a, a number in their bid, and if they're the successful bidder, that's what they get paid. On paving jobs, that number usually starts at $10,000.
I have a map question.
Yes.
When I was a young man, a few years ago, Perry Street was a dividing line between east and, between east and west.
Yes.
And Jaeger Street ran to Perry Street, and then it was La Grange from Perry Street on west.
Jaeger splits. I wanted to say is that dog?
Jaeger.
But it might be Perry.
That's the way it was, that's the way it was back then.
Okay.
And Perry Street through town, I believe, was, was, 100 block of Perry Street would be where Snyder's is, as opposed to that being, this Front Street would actually run into South Perry.
I wanted to check that and I didn't look it up. I know everybody keeps saying North Perry. I'm not certain where North Perry splits. I'd have to look at the plaques, but you're correct. I don't think North Perry splits at the bridge. I, I was thinking it was either Front or Riverview.
Yeah.
I was going to look it up.
And Riverview was, was built when I was in high school, so that really wasn't pertinent at that time.
And since we're mentioning it, just because it's a pet peeve of mine, there's no such thing as North Scott Street.
Right.
It's Scott Street. There is no North Scott Street on any plaque ever recorded in this county.
There is North Sheffield.
There is in North Sheffield, but it does not run into Sheffield. There is no South Sheffield. There is no South Sheffield.
You got that, Brian?
Want to get off track?
The car wash is North Perry.
But it shouldn't be.
485 North Perry Street.
If you go across the, if you go across the bridge to the first buildings on the west side of the river bridge, where there used to be a grocery store and all of that, that was actually the 400 block of Perry Street, South Perry.
It's because the canal used to be there, right?
Right, the canal ran behind the high school.
The canal was the, was the North South Line?
The
Yeah.
gas station is 330 South Perry, the Shell Station. And then it goes 400 on the other side of the bridge, but it's listed as North Perry.
I don't believe the others.
I wouldn't either.
Any other questions, comments?
So this legis, legislation is only addressing parking for now?
Actually, that's if we want to do it that way.
I think we do it that way, I think we start adjusting the parking now and as the pavement gets done, then the parking's already kind of set. If we want to pave it one way, but I think in the meantime, we can still start your, start your, your, your parking project. So that people are not in compliance right there in front of Trigem. Welcome to Napoleon, glad you're here, here's a ticket for everybody to park right here in front of it.
Every day.
If they don't, they can park right here in a parking lot.
I do think that without striping or anything, it's going to be difficult. Because I think I see people parked all which way there.
A lot of times they're in their angle, but not, not necessarily all the time, yeah.
And it's not in great condition, is it?
Oh, yeah, we, I mean, right now, I guess the plan would be to pave the, the one way, dress up the stone. There could be even put in parking blocks, make it even be tilted to kind of.
Guide people a little, yeah, that's a good idea.
So do we need to direct the law director for two things? One, making Front Street one way at the time of the construction of the project? I thought we discussed that.
That was, that was understand that's what we're going to do, yeah.
Unless.
Parking, parking change now.
Right.
Change one way after, after paving is complete.
You tell me, yeah. I'll write it however you like. That was your recommendation, I believe, the other day, Chad said.
Yeah, I, I would be okay with the parking being written now, whenever, we're not in a huge hurry, but we can get started on it. The one way, if we start on it now, we don't really know when this has to take effect. If we'd like to wait till construction's underway and we have a schedule, that might be better. I don't hold the track of it. I guess if you
That's fine.
Request legal to write the legislation, I can work with legal on the timing.
I guess if it doesn't matter one way or the other, it may be cleaner if we wait till later when we know when the date is that's going to open, so we can say this takes effect on a specific date instead of when it's over.
Because essentially, the legislation, when it's written and we could put the codified, that's what we need for PD to be able to enforce it. If we have it striped and set up and we're off by a day or two, that's, it's really just an enforcement issue.
So again, doesn't matter either way.
Any way you like.
I'll just make a motion to draft, to ask the law director to draft legislation to modify the ordinances for parking on the north side of Front Street.
Second. All right, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Item L three, discussion or action, approve plans and specifications for the state Route 110 waterline connection project. Chad?
Sure, thank you. I think we talked about this at budget time, when the new river bridge was put in by the county in conjunction with the state, the city paid to have a waterline placed under that bridge. Currently, the city only had, the, the city's most easterly river crossing is at the Perry Street Bridge. The crossing, the river crossing, we used to have east of there, Broth, about 12 years ago or so, and it's never been repaired or replaced. So we had that hung under the bridge. However, it does not connect to the existing waterline that is located on State Route 110. We're requesting approval to advertise for a project we have designed that will connect the existing dead end waterline on State Route 110 to the new waterline that was installed as part of the bridge project. This would be approximately 800 feet of waterline, the estimate's $130,000. I believe, I'm not going to get the name right, Bill, we have funds available to cover the cost of this project.
ARPA funds.
ARPA funds?
This was one of the ARPA projects that we had suggested. So this wouldn't come out of water funds solely. If there are any overages or anything above, whatever we had allocated from our, from the ARPA funds would come out of the water fund, so.
Yeah, I'm trying to get this out because of the delays we're seeing in the supply chain, specifically valves and fire hydrants. So I'm trying to get this out and I put a completion date in early September, just knowing that the delays we're going to see in getting some of those parts. So with approval plans and specs, we'll get this project out to bid and try to get everything committed.
Do you have a motion to approve the plan?
Motion.
Second. Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That's been approved. Item L four, discussion or action, approve plans and specifications for the Ritter Park Boat Ramp Replacement Project. Okay, Chad?
Yes, last fall, Tony Carter approached me, was concerned regarding the condition of the existing boat ramp. Went down, took a look at it, put together some numbers. Then last week, he asked me if I could prepare the plan to put up a bid. We got the plans put together of note, we're going to replace the ramp. We are not getting below the ordinary high watermark of the river. That would involve some extensive permitting. So we're essentially going to replace it where it is above the waterline with concrete, with the correct D groups in it for O D N R specifications. The estimate for the works, $50,000, Tony's budget's $50,000. Just requesting approval so we can get this out to bid. Tony's hoping to have this in place by no later than mid-April.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments?
Just that it needs it.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
We are planning as part of the project to put in additional drainage, a drainage system under the concrete and with a steel grid and footer at the bottom to try to prevent this from happening again with the differential settlement. And if you've noticed the water that comes out of the bank and runs down the existing boat ramp, these drains we're replacing should alleviate much of that. And we almost slipped into the river when we were measuring it a couple weeks ago. All eyes.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
All right, that's been approved. Item L five, discussion or action, to approve entering into a professional design service agreement with Peterman Associates for the Safe Routes to School Infrastructure Improvement Project, P I D number 115453. Chad?
Yes, as you may recall, the City of Napoleon worked in conjunction with school officials and the public. We were able to receive a grant from ODOT through the Safe Routes to Schools program. That grant is in the amount of $207,000, which is primarily to help us install some sidewalks in the areas where sidewalks are missing, to improve crosswalk, striking signage, and just to improve the safety for kids walking to school in the area surrounding the school campus. Of note, we are not allowed to spend any of this money on school property, it has to all be within city rightway. Late last fall, we put out a request for qualifications, we, we received two qualification statements. We reviewed them, ranked them, chose Peterman as the highest ranked of the two we received. I negotiated with them on a contract price and their price was $28,235. Approved budget for this project was $50,000. Since we're able to get it under budget and get a scope of services that met what we required, I just request council approve the contract. And please note, the contract cost does not come out of the grant, but it was included within the 2022 budget.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that's been approved. Moving on to item L six, discussion or action on request to apply for assistance to firefighters grant. For chief?
This is the request to apply for the fire, assistance firefighters grant, or the AFG grant for the one ton pickup truck. That'll be used to haul around the grain trailer, the fire safety trailer, and to do different types of drives with public education. But the current 806 that has the water and things in the back, it just is going to be too much to be able to haul. It's already a little bit too much for the, the safety trailer as it is now. But then certainly when the grain trailer is built, then we won't have really the best ability to be able to pull that thing around for public education. So it's still federal grant, does require a match. So there's different types of what percentage that will look like. The minimum is a 5% minimum, but of course, we want to be competitive, so we're going to take a look at some previous, you know, what the previous ones were matched, gets our best chance.
All right, thank you, chief, any other questions?
This does require legislation, it's a homeland security grant, right?
Yes.
We've done this in the past and we did legislation before. And they will request a copy of past legislation as this process continues.
All right, so we need a, a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation for this grant?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item L seven, discussion or action, December 2021, replacement pages to the codified ordinances. We just need to direct the law director to draft legislation.
That's just the stuff that changes at the cha, changes at the state level, right?
Changes at state level, but changes here too. We can make certain changes here that affect what needs to be published. I mean, all the changes we make to our codifies are published. It'll be both, the one I'm looking for right now, and I haven't had a chance to, to really review it. I know on the state level, there were a lot of modifications to fireworks prohibitions. And if, they absolutely should have, but if they somehow dropped, dropped the ball on, on it, this group that the updates are out, are codified, that's one that we may have to come back and quickly try to change.
Good. Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
All right. L eight, discussion or action, ODOT state purchasing contract for crack ceiling. Anything we need to discuss on this right now?
Just legislation we need put in place to be able to utilize the current state contract bid price. So we're just requesting to have the legislation drafted so we can utilize the state contract, which is what we've done in the years past.
Thank you. All right, need a motion to direct the law director?
Motion. Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
All right, item L nine, discussion or action, purchase of Baco for the Water Distribution Department. Joel?
Hey, well, we budgeted 138 and our estimate right now with the pertinences is 124,663. So just requesting approval to purchase the Baco and sell the other one we got deals.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
All right. Hey, we'll go around the table here and start with Lori today. Hey, ladies first.
Molly.
Let me come back to you.
Yeah, I'll take a mulligan if I need one, but I don't think I have anything.
All right, Kevin?
I just again want to thank you all for passing the resolutions. Again, we officially closed the books on 2021. And what I have passed out to all council members and to the mayor, this is the 2022 final budget book. It's very similar to last year's, but with the adjusted numbers and there's just a few other odds and ends on there. If you have any questions about this or anything in there, or if there's something that you'd like to see in, in future books like this, just let me know.
Thank you. Lori, you have anything?
Nice job on this. I haven't looked through it yet, but it looks really nice, so thank you for that. And Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Nice job on your address and if anyone else would have given that speech, it would have taken at least 40 minutes, I think. But it was very informative and it was nice to look back, so good job, thank you.
It's kind of funny because my wife said, how long can it be? I'm like, that's, it's a 40 minute speech, but usually when the, you know, president gives it, he'll say five things and half the crowd stands up and, you know, applause for three minutes, so. If that doesn't happen, it'll be much shorter, so I guess it's a bit much shorter, so.
You stole mine at the last minute. Nice job, Jason, that's all I have.
That's all I have right now also. Thank you. Dan?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, Ken?
Good speech, glad to hear it.
Thank you.
Dr. Dave?
Lot of good accomplishments, good to hear, nice job.
Mayor Billy?
Requesting an executive session for pending or imminent litigation. I won't spend more than five minutes talking.
You never do.
Joel?
Thank you, Council President, Mayor again, another great City to City speech. They're all, they're all good. What's that a list of items? I know the county is looking for ideas and suggestions for the use of ARPA funds from all the communities in Henry County. So if you have any ideas or suggestions, if you want to send, email them to me or if you have any other thoughts or you want to talk about something, we know. But I've got a, I kind of have a shortlist going, I know I've talked with local chiefs about an item and, you know, we'll look in there, but our, ARPA funds were slashed, if you recall, and half But, um, our, ARPA funds were slashed, if you recall, in half, and they were, our half and all the other municipalities' halves were reallocated to other jurisdictions. So, you know, I mean, there is room for, for City of Napoleon to possibly capture some of the other funds, you know, from, from Henry County. So, we have some ideas, we have a couple of priority issues, and then, if we got anything else, please let me know, and, you know, I'll, I'll talk with either the committee chair, council president, and mayor, see if there's any, any way that we wanna present anything. I think that's how the commissioners are doing it, is they're requesting entities to come in and present projects to them. So, you know, just kind of decide on how you want that to look. The new chairs, there's discussion on chairs. I know Amanda and Roxanne, I think you've been in, in touch with us too, but Amanda's gonna kind of head this up on figuring out these, either we're getting new chairs or getting new parts for the chairs, so that they can, you know, function properly and not bleed. And I don't know when that's gonna take place, so I'll follow up on that. And then, House Bill 512, Kevin had sent something out, or Billy did, I forget what. I think it's House Bill 512, they had to do with the Police and Fire Dependents Fund, you know, and upping municipalities' allocations to them, that will have a direct impact on our general fund. So I don't know if there's any desire not to send a letter to legislators, to our legislators, about that. Or not, but we can prepare a letter, that's something we wanna do, but just, you know, something to keep on the radar, since that's been kicked around right now, so. And the last thing, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for the well wishes. I didn't, I wasn't in touch with everybody, but my, my dad last week went into cardiac arrest, which is why I wasn't here. He is actually making a miraculous recovery right now at the St. Luke's Hospital. Kind of unbelievable, and, you know, we're very fortunate that he's, he's, he's coming out of this, so I really appreciate everybody's, uh, thoughts and prayers and well wishes, so, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. I do have a mulligan, we do have another executive session for compensation of personnel. So, and we have a motion to go into executive session for compensation of personnel.
Some.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, and then, we have a motion to go into executive session for pending litigation.
Some.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross? Yes.
And we do, we should go in the other room, and let's start with the pending. Joel? Roxanne, you ready? Okay, we have a motion to come out of executive session for pending litigation.
Some.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross? Yes.
Okay, there's no action taken there. And can we have a motion to come out of the executive session for compensation of personnel?
Some.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
All right, no action taken. Okay, item and approved, payment of bills and financial reports. In the absence of any objections or corrections, payment of bills and financial reports shall stand approved. Stand approved. We have a motion for adjournment.
Some.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Cordis?